At 7 o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order. And our first item of business before we even do a roll call is to administer the oath of office to our new council member.
Do I have to repeat it?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Paul Gerard.
I, Paul Gerard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Council.
And I will faithfully discharge you duties of the Office of City Council.
Of the city of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
Of the city of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And with that, Dan, can we get a roll call, please?
You may. Councilmember Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Monson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Present.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
And Mayor Bain.
Here. All rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. And before I ask, I would point out one minor change in that Item 8G is actually multiple commission appointments this evening, and there is an updated memo on the dais for council. So if we could entertain a motion for that amendment, or if there are any other changes anyone would like to make.
I'll make a motion that we amend the agenda as stated.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, and we have an agenda. We have open forum this evening. Open forum is your time to speak on anything of your choosing, up to three minutes. We have just one member, Mr. Schaefer. Welcome.
Well, the real, original reason I signed was to thank the Public Works for putting a new mailbox up at my house. I appreciate that. I tried to repair the one that they broke, but I really couldn't do a good job. And they put up a real nice one. I'll give it back to them in the spring. Anyway, a couple other things. One of them, and I'd like to know how we're doing on the cost of those buses running to St. Paul, Minneapolis. I'd like to see a printout of how much we paid for them, how much we're making on them, or how much we're losing on them. And I'm kind of wondering why you people are so generous that you do this and let people from Wyoming, Chicago, and all these other places ride for a fee if that fee doesn't cover the cost of the delivery. I drove to St. Paul for 20 years. There's no money up here that I could find where I could get a job. And that leads me to the other thing. I've seen they're looking to hire a public, well, the Public Works Director is here, Finance Director. I got a hunch that maybe we could get by without some of all these people. You can hire people all you want, and you can smile when you go boke. And that's just what happens when you overhire. So get more work out of the people you've got if you can. And let's try to get along with the money we got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have open forum this evening?
Like we was talking about is that $275,000. Oh, my name is Elvin Norby. 10255217, James Street, on the Scandia border. Okay. In 2010, I believe it was, Susan Young, Jim DeForre, and Bagatti, who was out of his head, voted to give the Met Transit $275,000 a year from Forest Lake taxes to subsidize to buy buses from the Met Council. Why are we still paying for that? I did take a survey back then, and over half the vehicles, or two-thirds of them, that I took in that parking lot down there were not from Forest Lake. I got the names, the license numbers of the cars, and who owns them, what they own them, the whole damn thing. And so why are we still subsidizing the Met Council, Met Transit, for $275,000 a year out of our city taxes for buses? That's all.
Thank you. With that, we'll close open forum. And I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? With that, I will call the vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agendas, signal by saying aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. Motion carries. First item on our regular agenda is Item 8A, which is Officer Swearing In Ceremony. Chief Peterson?
Mayor and City Council members, tonight, I am honored to introduce you to Officer Luke Hanegraff. Luke completed and passed a very thorough hiring process and background investigation, including a physical agility test, medical evaluation, and psychological evaluation. Prior to joining our police department, Luke worked with the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, and actually worked for our department as well for eight years prior to that. Luke has extensive education, training, and experience that he has brought to the Forest Lake Police Department. Officer Hanegraff started with the Forest Lake Police Department on January 30. At this time, I would like to ask Officer Hanegraff and Mayor Bain to come down here. And Mayor Bain, if you could formally swear in Officer Luke Hanegraff by reciting the oath of office.
Luke, if you could repeat after me. I, Luke Hanegraff, do solemnly swear.
I, Luke Hanegraff, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties of a Forest Lake Police Officer.
And I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties of a Forest Lake Police Officer.
In the city of Forest Lake, in the county of Washington, state of Minnesota.
In the city of Forest Lake, county of Washington, state of Minnesota.
According to law and to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the law and the best of my ability and understanding.
Welcome to Forest Lake.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next agenda item this evening is an ordinance to amend city code to require public design of public infrastructure. And Donovan, I believe you're leading us through this?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and members of council like to present the zoning code, well, city code text amendment. This is to require public design of the public infrastructure within the city. What I mean by public infrastructure is basically everything within the city right-of-way, also the stormwater ponds, which can be on the outlots of residential subdivisions. The current situation, I've prepared some notes here for you, describes that basically right now, the city does allow, is an option for the city engineer to design the public infrastructure. But right now, the overall trend is that there is private design for public infrastructure. This has been the case since 2015, when there was another coded amendment, which changed it from the previous condition, which was the city engineer designing the public infrastructure, the roads, the curves, sanitary sewer, water, public water, light poles, and all the stormwater facilities. However, what has happened is that we've seen from our experience the last few years is that often this is an inefficient use of city engineer time, because after the design from the private firm has been completed, because, and this is not to be a knock on the private designers, but the city engineer knows the standards, and everything is built to city specs and standards. And so there has to be actually almost really two teams, the designer plus the reviewer, that occurs. And so the expected efficiencies with cost and time have not been achieved, in my opinion. And also, it's related to inconsistent plans, project timelines. And also, after projects been bid and a contractor's on site, oftentimes, the city doesn't know what the contract is between the private developer and the private contractor. So it's often communication issues involving expectations and some inefficiencies with that. Also, there are local watershed district rules, for instance, that the city knows and can work around and produces other efficiencies. The proposed text amendment shown in your packet as ordinance number 686 lays out the city engineer design of this public infrastructure. And the way the ordinance reads right now is that the city administrator can be the one who says otherwise, as far as if it's not appropriate for public design and infrastructure. Sometimes, there might be a situation, you know, I can think of one situation last few years where it was a minor 200-foot sanitary sewer installation, where a private design would have been appropriate due to the scale. Also, the proposed city code text amendment lays out how the developer pays for the design and everything related to the construction, surveying, testing, installation, and inspection. And this is all, you know, laid out in a development agreement. And then, then, of course, the city council could approve otherwise, and the city could construct those at the cost of the developer. And also, it explains in more detail how basically everything within the right-of-way becomes the city's design. And this is done after a preliminary approval, a preliminary plat approval, where basically the lots are laid out in this, mostly we're talking about residential subdivisions, where there is the public infrastructure extension. And then, and then after the design, those plans are then, you know, in coordination with the developer, they're let out to contractors. So the city has much more control over the product, over the timing, and we expect that that would, you know, produce some better outcomes than we've seen in the last few years. You know, this was a subject of the workshop in January with council. And, you know, from that, there was a request that, you know, staff reach out to local developers to see what their feedback on this is. And in your, in the staff memo, there is one description, one developer, you know, answered, you know, my request for comment. And the comment related to the, basically that it's an unnecessary step, and there was a clear preference on the part of the developer to actually, you know, retain that ability to design the projects. And also, the city plan commission did review this at their February 13 meeting. And the commission members had a couple recommendations. They recommended approval, but with these conditions, that the city council be the body that authorizes that private design of public infrastructure. In consultation with staff, we believe that staff does have the expertise and direct knowledge of the developer of the projects, and we'd like to, and staff consensus that that be remained as written, so that the city administrator be that person, that entity that does authorize that private design in those specific cases. Also, there's discussion at the plan commission that the requirements for a qualified licensed engineer, which can do the private, the design of public infrastructure in specific cases, be, have a more rigorous set of criteria. Right now, it's engineer with ten or more years of experience. However, in consultation with staff, again, we'd like to keep the text as written, as shown in your packet, because of the inability of the city to really even ensure that if they made a stricter standard, that still someone in the office of the engineering office wouldn't be the designer. You know, it's a situation where unless we're standing over someone's shoulder and looking at their screen and watching them design, there's really no way to ensure who designs it. However, of course, there always would, you know, the name, the signature at the bottom would be that experienced person, and, you know, they would represent as their work. But there's no way to really make that a transparent process. So the staff recommendation is that to keep that, the licensed engineer standards as written, you know, as written in ordinance number, proposed ordinance number 686. At this point, I'd like to take any questions from council. Also, encourage city engineer, if he has any comments, to provide some more detail as well.
Ryan, any? Anything to add?
I guess I'll just add that, obviously, I think all parties want to be as efficient and be low on the, you know, budgets, and deliver stuff that gets approved and built accordingly to the vision of the developer and the city. You know, it's nothing that we want anybody to fail at. We provide, anytime a new developer comes to town, we provide example plans, and here's the, you know, our specifications are online. We're just not having that always followed. So writing 100-plus comments on a, to make a, you know, a submittal, and then going back and forth for months, and having our comments addressed in our review memos, and then basically jumping in and doing the work lots of times anyways, any of the more complicated projects that involve lift station force mains, you know, pump sizing, water modeling, stuff like that, if we need to have a road to meet a state aid standard, so in the future we can designate that as a state aid road, or even just some of the permit applications where they're using different factors, you know, and throwing off numbers and projections of users. So all those things that we're backtracking on, you know, that's the stuff up front in the design, we're getting into it anyways. And just the constant shifting back and forth of the data, you know, electronic data, you know, more efforts and duplication can be put forth, and just preparing plans and specs that the city knows they want and Public Works. We're not overtaking these projects, it's just simply going back to what the city used to perform in the past that worked very well. It's just one piece of the puzzle, the project and the process. Developer's still responsible for all the ups, up fronts, the surveying, the wetland delineations, and the grading plan. He wants to obviously maximize the property and the plat to his economic gain. It's just when we get into the street utility plans within the puzzle, we're getting half-finished stuff all the time that lead to months and months of comments and back and forth. You know, that's what we're trying to clean up there, and then going back again to the bidding process here, it'd still be privately bid, but we would be preparing that bid to be sent out. You know, you got projects that have unfinished infrastructure, you know, turn lanes not completed, water not looped, nobody coordinated the private utility installation, so now we got start and stop of sidewalk, where that stuff was just, you know, again, no control over the contractor, what was actually bidded. Now, going back to the previous method, we would know exactly all that stuff and have that in a contract between the developer and the contractor, but still the development agreement between the city and developer. And then, once construction finished, we would have record plans finished no later than March or April, you know, the first winter in, instead of, you know, what has it been, year and a half to two years on some, one project, that we don't have record plans, and then people are living in houses, and we have no ties to curb stops, because they're all been buried, and Public Works is supposed to go turn on water for these places. So we're out there digging in the wintertime, trying to find those stuff. That's just what we've been dealing with since we changed. Yes, there was some projects that went very well, but even when they have the technical design factor in them, of stuff that they don't deal with every day on private, you know, our public infrastructure, we still come in and do the work for them anyways. So it's just, again, trading back and forth of information. So it's simply just to prepare the street utility plans within the overall project that's still ongoing. So that's what I believe the request here is tonight, and then, you know, you take some of your own staff, and how much time they've consumed on specific projects. I mean, Dan can personally attest to that, on how many hours per week he was spending on some stuff, and just moving forward. So just looking for a faster, efficient way, and then have our data stored in events, say, obviously, if I got into an accident today, or Dave got an accident, it's all in the queue, and, you know, somebody will have access to it the next day, instead of waiting and double checking for stuff to come in over and over. So that's kind of what we've talked about at the planning commission meeting, certainly open it up for any questions or concerns. I know one of the biggest concerns was addressed, or brought up, was transparency or the perception. You know, obviously, if the developer's coming to town, we want to make them feel as comfortable as possible, because we want them to spend money here to develop, and we want them to be a repeat customer. So if our first project with them doesn't go well, they're not coming back. Projects went well, they continue to come back and back, you know, and that makes everything more streamlined for everybody involved, and a cheaper project each time you work together. So that's kind of what I had to add to the conversation, certainly open it up for any questions at this point.
Thank you both. Maybe before we entertain a motion, any questions or any follow-up clarifications for, of staff before we move into a motion?
I just had one question. The recommendation of the planning commission, I tend to value their opinion on some of these things, and I'm just wondering what the rationale was behind the city council being the body that authorizes the private design.
Well, this is all within, you know, major subdivision approval, essentially. And in that role, the city council does have final decision. You know, the planning commission recommends, makes the recommendation to council. And I believe that was the rationale. I believe it was, you know, I think there was some desire for consistency with that. I'm not sure what else.
You're on the money there, Donovan. It was pretty much...
Oh, you're this familiar face up there. Yes, yes.
It had to do really with kind of how we do it, and there's a chain of command at the top, and that the council would be ultimately responsible, good or bad, on the project. So the thought was that having the council sign off for it was a good option.
And it's also a situation that if the city administrator does make a determination, that decision can be appealed to council. So council can be the body that is the ultimate decider on that, if, you know, if it's, if the ordinance is passed, given the city administrator this authorization.
My understanding is that staff isn't real excited about the recommendations from the planning commission at this time. Is that correct? I mean, it sounded to me like you just wanted to leave it with the amendments as written, without the recommendations from the planning commission.
That's the feeling I got, yes.
I, believe me, I agree with the council people here that say that, you know, that the planning commission is an important decision-making body, and I respect their decisions, but in this particular case, I don't see why we need to go there. And I think we should, my opinion, my humble opinion, is that we should leave it with the amendments that the engineers have asked for.
And some heartburn over whether this should be the city administrator or the city council. And generally, on large projects that are coming before council anyway, where these types of decisions would be made, I struggled on two different paths. One path was, do you bifurcate within the ordinance and give some level of authority at the staff level versus identify what was more complicated, what should go to council? And I ultimately came to a feeling that that wasn't necessary, and, but also wanted to get away from, this in many, many projects is a very complicated decision, and I wanted to take it off of the lap of one person, and to spread it across a deciding body that was also making project approvals. And so I agreed with planning commission on this one, that when this is important and when it's, the decision is valid, that I'd prefer it to be a council decision. But maybe we're talking about similar things on if it's a smaller project and it's just a straight-through, does that need to go to council? And so I'm open to a multiple-step ordinance, but that also started to feel clunky. And I think the overall goal here is, is that we're trying to have a simpler, streamlined process that isn't viewed as being too much red tape. And I found myself talking myself into red tape that I didn't want to get to, so.
Yeah, I, Mayor Bain, I would agree with your perspective there. I just was a little bit on the fence on that. It was clear to me in reading through all of this, that that shift in 2015 to allow that developer control and potential cost-saving measure for the city certainly didn't result in a potential cost-saving measure for the city. So I can certainly understand the rationale for wanting to shift this. I was just curious as to that rationale of the planning commission, but I'm not rigid, you know, on this issue either. It sounds like there is a potential process in place, should we need to, as a council, kind of review that.
Yeah, I think it's important to reiterate what Donovan said, that even if the administrator has the power to approve, there's always a place to appeal that approval and be heard. And if it's a, you know, if I make a big, huge mistake or something, then you have a way to correct it, so.
Just staff, do you feel like that can be done within a reasonable timeframe that doesn't feel like it adds? Because I'm sensitive to, in the heat of that discussion, then it's an appeals process that feels like, oh, that's another decision three weeks out, and I would hope we're working together on these more collaboratively, but...
I think what you're struggling with here is the big versus little.
Yes.
You know, if it's a little change, like was mentioned, you know, 100-200-foot sewer pipe, that's one thing that we should be able to do. If it's a, you know, 1,000-home subdivision, and the developer's unhappy because we haven't given them permission, I guarantee you that's going to get here quick. You know, and we're going to, I mean, because the decision is quick, it's either, so it's a no, and then they'll say, okay, what? And we'll say, well, you have to go into the council to overrule the administrator, and we schedule that as whatever it is. I mean, it's not a six-month process, it's really, the whole decision tree has been made, and you really only have one step left, and it's to argue before the council that I should be allowed to do the infrastructure myself versus having the city design it. the city design it.
Yeah, I have a feeling that having it, the council have the decision, it creates uncertainty in the process. Because the way it's written, it would go through the preliminary subdivision process with planning commission, that review, and then go to council. And then that would be the time when that decision would be made, whether they would do a public or private design based on council's decision. But that could be, you know, months into the actual, you know, project life. Whereas they could come, in this case, come to staff and, you know, after a staffer, after they've gathered the, you know, essential information, then they can make a determination prior to even the planning commission review and that review process leading to council.
If you don't mind, I appreciate everybody's comments, but the way I look at this, I mean, we're trying to streamline that ordinance. And I think this would be kind of muddying the water a little bit. And for the city council to make the decision on who should be designing this thing, I'm not comfortable with that. I really am not. Because here we could give that authority to the engineering company, the workforce, the building make and move on. And I think the whole thing would get done quicker and there wouldn't be any question about who's going to be doing it. That's just my opinion.
At the staff level.
At staff level, yeah.
Other questions or points of clarification of staff on this topic? With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move approval of ordinance 686 as amended.
I'll second.
Clarification on as amended.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for too. In other words, Kathy, are you asking for the commission members, planning commission recommendations?
You could just say as amending the Title III, Chapter 3. So you're not, mayor members of the council, I think that the clarification is the ordinance amends the existing code. As I understand the motion, it's an ordinance, it's a motion to approve the ordinance as presented which amends those provisions of the city code.
Okay. So a better frame would be?
Just a motion to approve the ordinance as presented by staff because the ordinance is amending the underlying code.
So I need to rescind my-
Just amend it.
Current motion? Okay, so I move to approve ordinance- 686, amending Title III, Chapter 35, Section 3503 and Title 15, Chapter 152, Sections 152 dot 072, 152 dot 073 and 152 dot 083 regarding subdivision regulations, construction of public improvements.
Very good. Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
So I would like to say, as I reflect on the feedback from the planning commission, planning commission was very concerned about what this meant for perception of Forest Lake and being developer friendly. I think that this puts some pressure on council as well as staff to manage that perception and that we, this, you know, those comments, when I hear those comments, I reflect on some of the other changes that we have contemplated but not yet made around bringing closer together, planning, zoning, building, bringing that under a single umbrella. So I think that planning commission's concerns are incredibly valid. And in theory, this is an area where I would like to say, private world, if you can do it better and if you can do it cheaper, go do it. But I have to reconcile that with what we're seeing in practice and we're not, that has not been our experience. And what we're seeing is developers developing for a project rather than the community. And we're here for 100 years. So I'll support the ordinance change tonight, but I, we need to take that feedback of planning commission to bring in the voice of the developers and manage those expectations of, yes, this seems like we have brought some flexibility, we've removed some flexibility from the process. But when I look at the facts and the timelines, I'm comfortable doing so because we don't, the process has not been working well. And in that, we've added cost and time. So, but again, I would encourage all of us to be, we need to continue to be developer friendly and provide a good experience to those wanting to make the investments in our community, so.
I think it'll get done cheaper and quicker. That's my opinion, you know, because it's, you're not going from, you know, one computer to the next, back and forth and back and forth. That's why I support this ordinance myself.
Any other comments on this item? With that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. Next, we have item C, 2019 State Aid, Street Improvements. Ryan?
Mayor, City Council, in front of you is the request tonight to approve plans and specifications and authorize advertisement for bid for the 2019 State Aid Street Improvements. So this project's scope is along Centennial Drive from Second Avenue to Sixth Avenue, 11th Avenue Southeast from Trunk Highway 61 to South Shore Drive, 15th Avenue Southeast from South Shore Drive to 11th Street Southeast and 11th Street Southeast from 15th to Highway 97. The sections along 15th and 11th will include construction of a 10-foot wide bike path pedestrian facility. And then the contract does also include provisions to protect the area around, on Centennial around the Fourth of July. So all work either has to be completed, you know, by June 27th, I believe in the contract, or they would have to start after the Fourth, just so we're not in the way of the parade route. And we've also coordinated very closely with Lila School along 11th Avenue on when their school times are. So that contract work would have to be completed within the full-time school time along 11th. 15th Avenue and 11th Streets are pretty more open-ended to allow the work to be in there, so we're not too restrictive. But there are, you know, obviously provisions in the contract on days they have to have the work completed once started. So also within the memo outlined in the top is the, you know, tentative schedule of the project. So our next step would be to go out and solicit bids upon receiving our approvals from the watershed district and state aid. Public Works has reviewed the plans. And then we'd be bringing it back for a possible award at a future city council meeting. So in the event, bids came in really high, you would have the opportunity to reject the bids if you wanted. Previously, we were at the city council for approved plans and specs. Tonight, we're here requesting the city council, or authorized plans and specs. Tonight, we're here for the city council to approve plans and specs and authorize ad for bid for the 2019 State Aid Street Improvement Project. With that, I'll open up with any questions.
Any questions for Ryan?
Ryan, could you just tell me again where the bike path, I heard 11th Street, but what was the other one?
So there will be a bike path constructed on the south side of 15th Avenue and the east side of 11th Street Southeast. So basically, you will kind of pick up where we left off in 2015 with the Safe Routes to School project there at the cemetery and Eighth and 15th, just in the southeast corner of St. Peter Church. Head eastward towards the park where you would link up to the existing sidewalk, headed northward into the existing neighborhood. And then we'd bring trail down south to Highway 97 and the gas station for sometime future connection. And then replacement of sidewalk on Centennial, so.
Okay, thank you. 15th Avenue has a sidewalk right now to the south?
It's a four-foot sidewalk. Can't plow it. It's not ADA compliant.
It's a mess.
It's up and down. The curb line actually gets shifted slightly north to make up the space and not to increase impervious area for the watershed rules. So we fit that in there, even with the existing power poles that are there and met state aid requirements on that, so. And now they'll be able to plow with a truck too, so.
Thank you. Other questions of Ryan?
Ryan, I have one more question for you. We had councils considered parking around 11th Avenue related to South Shore Drive and Belts Park. Can we just, can you just give us a quick update on what the thought is for 11th Avenue and what that means for future Belts Park?
So previously, prior to constructing the plans for this project, there was a thorough review completed on potential restriping 11th Avenue to position on-street parking to the north side of the road versus the existing south side of the road, once you get past the Lila School. So upon that review, we did solicit quotes as to see dollar amount, what that would cost at the time, instead of, you know, obviously during a project. Wasn't really expensive, but it was also something you could wait. But we did go into an engineering review that included some public outreach. We solicited all the properties along 11th, received feedback from each of those property owners. I would say 50% people actually communicated back. And the majority of them were not in favor of switching it and brought up some good points that were explored even further. Thus, if you did shift the drive-through, the through lane to the north side of the curb, you basically would be right up against the curb line to accommodate the space. And therefore, you lost your reaction zone for any of the cars that might be backing out of their driveway. Or had a fender hanging over the driveway, they would have already been in the through lane westbound. Also, mailboxes are located on the north side of the roadway, which when, every day, and a garbage truck, you would always have in a through lane, you would have to go through it or around it. And then coming out of South Shore Drive, you have a substantial grade elevation to the west, which the site distance was very limited for a block, block and a half. So after all that review and consideration, it was not practical in the safety change here, or just even a operations way, because we would have no reaction area on the north side of the road then by pushing the through traffic there. So right now, you have your steel shoulder on the north side that would allow the parking, you know, there. And then on the south side, you've got the wide sidewalk that allows for that reaction distance. So overall, we feel that keeping it the way it is today, the safety's still maintained and not decreased. One thing that is changed I should have brought up, because this has been another point, was the intersection control at the three major intersections. They're at South Shore, 11th, 15th and Eighth, which we already made the change right away based on department traffic, you know. And then also the intersection where Bay, 15th and 11th come to. So those will now all be three-way stops upon the completion of this project. New signage, proper signage and striping, so.
Very good. Any other questions of Ryan? With that, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the plans and specifications for the 2019 State Aid Street Improvements project and authorize advertisement for bids as requested.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? With that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have 8D ASME agreement. Patrick?
Yes, Mayor and City Council, last week, last meeting, I should say, you approved the terms of the ASME agreement. What's in front of you tonight is the contract language that shows you, a redline version that shows you all the changes that we made. Again, some of the highlights of this contract, it's a three-year contract which provides for some stability in the labor force and also grants a series of wage increases for the three years. In 2019, it's a 2% increase in retroactive January 1st with a 2% increase in July 1st. In 20, it's a 2% increase in January and a 1% increase in July. And finally, in 2021, it's a 2%, 2% increase, I should say, in January 1st and then a 1% in July 1st. It retains the rights to subcontract as we've had in the prior agreement and it makes some small adjustments in health insurance contributions.
Thank you. Any questions of Patrick before we, if not, will entertain a motion?
Can you remind us, Administrator Casey, what's the total budget impact over the terms of the contract?
Yeah, I believe it's around $50,000 for the three years.
Okay. Total for the, all three years?
All three years. That's approximately correct, yes.
Any other questions or I will entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor, we discussed this extensively at our close meeting and I have no problem with, with the contract as presented here. So I'll make a motion that we approve this labor agreement as per Patrick Casey's assessment here.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. I will call the motion. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, motion carries. Next, item, item E, Public Works Director. Patrick was also working on this one?
Yes, we talked about this in a January workshop. This is a change in the title for the Public Works Supervisor, I believe it's called now, to a, the Public Works Director. What this will do is change the pay scale to, increase the pay scale, I believe, to an 18, as based on the city's pay scale recommendations. It will become effective once the Public Works Director, the Fire Chief and the Police Chief are all in the MAP union. They have to approve this change as well. So once those negotiations start on their contract, we'll include this in their, in those negotiations. And hopefully, Dave is friendly with those two other people that they won't have any objection, so. Or they can take him to lunch. But, yeah, so it will start the, start it at the third step of the grade level 18 with salary proposed to begin at $104,577.
Any questions of Patrick on this position?
And just to clarify, this is the first step of a reorganization, a small reorganization in the Public Works Department that we're addressing with the current labor negotiations with the other, with the 49ers Union.
And just clarification of process, so this is a recommendation, but it wouldn't ultimately take effect?
This is a recommendation that you can approve or disapprove, but I cannot, we cannot put it into action until it's in the contract.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions or I will entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the promotion of Dave Adams, position of Public Works Director, once approved, or goes into effect once approved by the MAP union.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
No, just a comment. I just want to kind of thank city administration for taking a really thorough and thoughtful look at our current structure. I know we talked about this at length, but just, you know, to reiterate that I think, I think this is just going to be a much more effective service delivery structure, which ultimately will trickle down once everything is complete to the community. But with that said, there's no question our public works crew has been doing an outstanding job this winter. So I just kind of want to qualify that statement, but-
Don't tell them that. I'm kidding.
Yeah, just, I think this is a great direction to go with our Public Works Department, so.
In my opinion, this was an alignment of what's already, when you look at the job description and what's being done, this is just an alignment of title and compensation to the work that's already being performed. And if we wish to retain good people, we need to provide title and compensation. So I think this is just in everyone's best interest that we approve this this evening, so.
Any further discussion? With that, I'll call the vote. We have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, motion carries. And it's personnel night, so next item, Finance Director. Also, Patrick?
Yes, as you recall, at the, I think it was the January 17th workshop, we talked about the need for Finance Director. That currently, we are spending over $150,000 for our contractual vendor and plus all the overtime that the current staff is taking to perform all the duties that need to be done. A more efficient and more effective way to do that is to hire a Finance Director that can take charge of some of the supervision of the things that we've talked about in the past. For example, I made it last time, the water rate study that we paid for, $7,000 for, should have been an in-house water rate study that a financial person should have been able to do fairly, you know, readily and quickly and understand that kind of thing. Also, that this position would be another- Also, that this position would be another supervisor that would supervise the accounts, payable clerks, the senior accounting clerks, the utility billing clerk, and then also look into how we're going to reinvent our utility billing system once we have the meters and meter reading systems on so that we can get more accurate reads, we can get a better revenue stream, more accurate, get the money in the bank faster and things like that. We are proposing that the Finance Director, according to the Forest Lake pay studies, starts with a grade 19. That is a salary that starts at $96,000 and tops up at $129,000. Currently, the comparable cities that we use, the scale begins at 96 and tops out 121, so that's, we're right in that ballpark where we should be. If approved by the council, we would recruit immediately in, in the League of Minnesota Cities, the Government Finance Office Association and the Minnesota Governor's Finance Offices Association, as with the Public Works, Public Works Director. Once we would get approval and fill this position, we'd have to, once negotiations with the MAPE Union, we'd have to slot that in as well. So that's part of a contractual thing that we have to do as well. So even though you approve it, we again have to put that in our negotiations because this is a position that qualifies and is slated, slated for the MAPE Union.
You clarify something you just said. Are you able to recruit in advance of that MAPE Union?
Yes, I believe we are.
And could you even hire in advance of that?
I think we, I think the, hopefully the MAPE Union negotiations will start quickly. I don't, I don't anticipate any objection from the members of that union.
Thank you. Any questions, Patrick?
I know, I know you mentioned the $150,000 we're, we're currently spending to contract these services out, but my understanding from the last discussion that we had was we were, some of our internal staff were also realizing some pretty significant overtime
Yes.
to kind of keep up with some of these things, which we would anticipate getting under control as well.
Correct. We have the, mostly it's the payroll clerk and she has taken on more of the traditional finance director's role in making sure everything runs smoothly and correctly. I would bank that she's probably 60 hours a week, maybe a little more, a little less, but constantly. And the problem with that is that we need somebody, A, to, to do these jobs and have time to do them, but also we don't need to burn out our staff having somebody work 60 hours a week as, it just costs us more money and it doesn't do very well for that person's health or wanting to come in every day. So she's been a real good employee and has taken on the task, but I think we need to relieve that and, and, you know, reorganize how some of the things are done again in the finance area that we have.
My understanding, Patrick, is by bringing this in-house as well, this person will be here five days a week and staff has access to this person where right now it's contracted, which we're spending more and is only here maybe one day a week, is that?
Correct. And while the contractual arrangement has worked, it's, it's not working to the best of its ability, only because the person is here once a week. Yes, email and phone calls do work, but to have, you know, walk, walk down the hall or walk to the next office by myself or the Public Works Director or the engineer or the police to have a financial question needs to be answered, well, that person is doing other work for other clients, so sometimes there's a delay. But I think that having another professional, especially a finance professional in, in the building will, will do nothing but aid administration and the smoothness of how our operation goes. And in the long run, it'll save us more money because we won't have to do, we won't have to farm out some of the studies that we have to farm out now.
To me, this whole thing's a no-brainer. You know, when we lost our Finance Director a few years ago, in fact, as I spoke out against it way back then and, and just made no sense whatsoever. And now we have an opportunity to really get a full-time person back here at no cost, I mean, no additional cost. We're already paying a big lump of money that this thing really won't cost us to have somebody here full-time. And I know when the other Finance Director was here, she was here for a lot of the meetings and so it wasn't just the day-to-day stuff, it was evening stuff too. So it, to me, it just makes sense. And I'd just like to see this, see it move forward with at least a, you know, recruitment part of it, because that might be a job.
Yeah, just to, we, once approved, we will start recruiting immediately. The Finance Director market is very tough right now. I've talked to some of my colleagues in, in different municipalities and they're having a difficult signifying qualified people. And as I mentioned, I think the last time we spoke about this, is that we will get the right person. If we find that we have a pool of candidates go through an interview process and they're not the right person, we won't hire just to hire, we will wait until we get the right person to hire if we have to recruit two times, three times, four times. The most important thing is to find the right fit, not just to fill the position, so.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we move ahead with the recruitment process and see if we can find the right person for full-time Finance Director.
Motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Any more discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Abstain. Motion carries. We are now to item G, which is Commission Appointment Recommendations, which is mine. I'll take, I'll take this. Council in front of you, you have an updated memo from what was in the packet. It came to my attention that not only did we, was it time to fill the vacancy for Parks, Lakes and Trails, Jason Steenblock has asked to be reappointed to his three-year term. So I am making a recommendation that we do that reappointment, but also Cable Commissioner Diane Helfin, who is the Forest Lake resident representative and also chairs the Cable Commission, if I can editorialize and say she does a fantastic job doing so. She has agreed to come back for a two-year appointment, which is that term, and so I'm making the recommendation that we appoint both and in this case, reappoint both to those positions. Any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move approval of Jason Steenblock to the Parks, Lakes and Trails Committee and Diane Haflin, Helfin, Helfin, to the Cable Commission. Sorry.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? All right, with that, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Tonight on our agenda, we have a discussion-only portion and we, these are items that traditionally may be taken up in workshop session. Council's recently added this section to the agenda to allow for additional discussion for items that may take multiple meetings. And with that, we are going to next move into a discussion on WAC charges.
Yeah, just before Dan starts his discussion, I just want to remind the council that the discussion on WAC charges and how we're going to, what we're changing, they are baked into the rate increase that you approved last December. We are not here increasing rates. We are adjusting the ordinance language to meet what was presented last, and approved last December. We approved a rate increase last December, we include WAC charge increases. So we're not increasing here to increase the WAC charge, we're just formulating those charges to reflect the analysis that was done in December.
Very good. And if I may request, we have new council members on board since last, and so just a little bit of background, I think, is appreciated by all. I think many were involved in the discussions, but not to this level of granularity, so. And even if we could just start with those in the audience who are paying attention and tuning in and what is, what does WAC stand for?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
A little bit of one-on-one first.
Madam Members of the Council, I did just that. I kind of went through and did kind of the walk into WAC charges and kind of did the analysis or the acronym explanation, so we all are speaking the same acronyms here. So basically, this first slide here, WAC versus water rate, so you hear the word WAC charge. What that is, is a water access charge. It's a charge, a one-time fee that we assess when building permits are issued here in the city of Forest Lake. It's for the infrastructure that supplies the water to the actual, the buildings. So basically, you look at it, it's the pumps, it's the wells, it's the water plants, it's the towers, it's the actual infrastructure that's needed to get the, the water from point A to point B. The purpose of the charge is to allow the city to be reimbursed for our past expenses and also our future expenses that need to be incurred to make water supply available to residents. Now, some of those future expenses will be driven by, say our capacity is X amount of gallons per day and if we have more homes come online, we'll need to increase our gallon outputs, we'll need to make, you know, improve our well pumping capacity. So these WAC charges are fees that we then assess to make those upgrade to the system. They're supposed to be separate from the rate, which is the water rate, that's more of your operation charges, that's the charges for processing the water, pumping the water, that's more the electricities and the labor rates, the chemicals that we need to treat the water, it's more operational. Those are the reoccurring charges that you'll see on your monthly bills, so that's the water rate. So while they are tied together, they're two separate things. So when you think of WAC, think infrastructure, when you think of rate, think consumption charges. Does that kind of give at least like a 20,000-foot explanation as to where we are? Kind of going back to where our current WAC rate is, as Administrator Casey said, the WAC rate was adjusted when we did the package of rate structure for 2019. It was adjusted to $3,600 per WAC unit. This adjustment puts us in line with comparable cities. If you actually were to take a look at the comparable cities and put them onto a bell curve, we're probably, we're not right in the middle, we're probably just a little bit slightly on the leaning a little more expensive than probably what the mean would be, but we're right in that middle, right at the top of the bell curve. So just slightly on, you know, the side of, slightly more expensive. However, we're very much in line, very much competitive with where our current WAC assessment is. One thing that the increase in the WAC rate allowed us to do, it does give us better cash flow projections, so when we have to do future expansions, we are going to be better positioned from a cash flow perspective since our WAC, the revenues that we're collecting are going to be helped, are going to be there to help us either pay cash for those future expansions or minimize the amount of bonding that we'll have to do, which will save us interest expenses. So this adjustment was needed, it did give us in a better position for future expansions. What is being discussed tonight is as we're going through the water rate study, we noticed that there was a calculation issue with how we were applying these WAC rates, WAC rate assessments to the different types of projects that come forward. So the best way to explain is I'll just kind of go through our current calculations and I'll kind of highlight where, where the issue came forward. Currently, for residential, we charge one rack per dwelling unit. So in essence, single-family home comes forward, one dwelling unit, they get assessed one WAC charge for that. Commercial, we, we base this on an equivalent residential unit or an ERU. Basically, what this is, that we charge one WAC unit per ERU and there's a formula, which I'll get to in just a second, that says if you have a meter of a certain size, you get charged X amount of ERUs for that, for that particular meter size. Multi-family units are also charged one WAC rate per ERU. And like I said earlier, ERUs are calculated per water meter size. We looked at the multi-family section of this, this is where, this is where the assessment was found, that we're not actually realizing the WAC revenues that we need to allow for the demand that they're putting into the system. Multi-family units are, they require pretty significant resources to fund, you're putting 80 units online, that's 80 homes, that's 80 dwelling units, and if we're not recouping that infrastructure cost, that's where we're starting to see the discrepancy happen. So that's kind of where the focus of this was. This is the current ERU calculation. Again, it's based on meter size, so you see here for a three-quarter inch meter, typical household meter, that's the one inch, it's one ERU. On the commercial side, so if you are, for example, a three-inch meter, typically, that always will basically supply 100-unit apartment complex. Now, again, that's as a rule of thumb, it's going to depend upon size of units, how many fixtures are in, there's a whole bunch of formulate, you know, things that go into the formula for the water rate, but typically, if you look back historically, the three-inch meter is serving typical apartment buildings here about 100 units. So instead of charging 100 WAC units for that, we're coming in at 18. So there's 82 units that we're not charging for currently, that's a pretty big potential increase in demand that we just don't have the revenues generated for on the WAC charges. So then what happens, as those expenses come forward, they have to get some of that from somewhere else because those expenses still need to occur, otherwise, future growth can't happen within the system, we're basically capped out. So what we're proposing, what's, when we looked at it, looked at kind of how do you adjust these, how do you get these to come up with a system that allows us to recoup the WAC revenues that we need to allow for future expansions? We looked at it, single residential, no change are being proposed to what's happening for single-family homes. It's still going to be, you know, what's being recommended is still the one-to-one, so one rack charge per one residential unit. Additionally, on the commercial side, using that equivalent residential unit has been working for most commercial projects in town, so the three-inch meters that we have in town, on the straight commercial side are make, are giving us the correct amount of rack revenue to supply for the demand that they're, that they're seeing. The multi-family, this is again where we're making that adjustment, and what's being recommended would be to adjust the way we do our multi-family, so we're charging one rack unit per dwelling unit as it comes forward. So you bring forward 100-unit, 110-unit multi-family unit, we charge you 100 racks for that particular development. Again, assessing it at a one-to-one. Where this runs into a little bit of a nuance is if you have a mixed-use commercial building with residential on top. So now you have the commercial side, we're charging on the water meter rate size and you have the residential side, we're, you know, if you adopt it, we're charging them based on the residential unit. So you have two potential calculations that could be in conflict with each other, try to bring them together. So to kind of address this, we're looking at bringing forward, so a mixed-use commercial building would be, the residential side would still be charged based on the residential unit, so if you have a 75-unit building, they'd be charged 75 WAC units for the residential side. The commercial side, we would then basically take out of the calculation and calculate it separately. So we look at, if it's 10,000 feet, based on number 50, we could say this use would require a two-inch meter. So we'd go back to the ERUs for that two-inch meter and say you get charged and then we'll leave it 16 units for a two-inch meter. So then they'd be charged 75 for the residential side and then they could be charged the 16 for the two-inch side. If the, if the building owner wants to put just a single four-inch meter in there, they can do that, but the city at that point, by separating these two out, we're still recouping the amount of revenue that we need to increase for that, to allow for that increase in, in potential demand or capacity in the system. Kind of looking at the current versus the proposed rate, rate calculations, I just ran this a quick, you know, kind of a ballpark study to kind of see what the difference in WAC revenues collected using the system would be. So for this analysis, it was basically a 75-unit residential apartment building with a 10,000-square-foot first-floor commercial space. So this is kind of that nuanced mixed-use development. Currently, in looking at it, we would anticipate that would come back with approximately a four-inch meter. Again, that would change depending upon the actual layout or actual size of the building, but for this assessment, a four-inch meter was what we kind of, what we plugged in there. That has an ERU of 32, so 32 WACs would be assessed for the, for the, for the building and you're collecting a WAC revenues of $115,200 for that particular, using a current system. Proposed, if you split out based on number of units and meter size, you're looking at 75 units, those are charged out, you're looking at $270,000 in rack revenues for the number of units. On the commercial size, looking at 10,000 square feet, that's going to be fed with a two-inch meter, so we're looking at 57.6 for that, for the commercial space, for a total of 327,600. And fully realizing that's a pretty big leap from what we currently are doing to the proposed. However, if you look at the proposed calculations comparative to where the SAC, which is the sewer access charge calculations are, they're relatively closer in line now than they were before. So in essence, our WAC charge is relatively significantly lower than where our SAC determinations are. I don't have the actual SAC determinations calculated here, but just kind of in conversations with staff, that's kind of, we looked at them and said, are they closer in line? And it does bring the two, you know, back in closer line. The other thing to say is that, you know, if you're bringing out 75 units and 10,000 square feet, again, that's a potential lot of increased demand to the system that at some point we're going to have to pay for. So if you're not charging those assessments upfront, those charges are still going to be assessed to the water fund at some point because those improvements are going to be made if you're going to continue to expand within the system. So by collecting it upfront, we'll have cash available to cash flow those things, we're not having to do any additional interest expenses. Kind of looking at where we are in the process, the next steps is kind of looking for council feedback on the proposed calculations. Those, that feedback will then be taken back and incorporated into an update to our city code. How these calculations are done is actually incorporate, is actually a part of our city code. So we need to do a code update to allow for this new calculations to be, to be utilized. Additionally, as part of that code update, we'd also, our current code has the fees listed right in the codes. If we make a fee adjustment down the road, we have to then go back to the ordinance, do an ordinance adjustment. We would just strip that language out and make it, you know, make the adjustment happen at the fee schedules and as the fee schedules update on an annual basis, those fees are automatically updated, there's no conflict between the two. Once that work is completed and the ordinance is drafted, it'll be brought back to council for public hearing and council. and council approval at a future meeting. Um, and with that, if you have any questions or kind of, you know, any more explanation on on WAC and WAC charges, I can do my best to answer them for you.
Questions of staff? Yes?
You mentioned that um, the revenue would be similar to surrounding communities. Are they calculated in a similar vein? By that I mean the same type of units? Or are we trying, going to have to explain something new to developers that come into town?
I, we, I did not go through every other city codes, like how everybody, it, it, you know, in, the initial look at it, I think everybody kind of has that kind of unique formula to what works for their community. I mean, the, the basic, end of the day, what you're trying to accomplish with WAC charges, you're just trying to meet those, those past investments and the, those past expenses and the future expenses. This, if you look and taking this back to the rate study that we looked at back from 2018, this positions us to make those WAC calculation assessments that we did as part of that rate study analysis. So when we looked at that, we anticipated a hundred units coming online per year to, that would drive the, the demand. I think if we put this in, you know, to kind of answer your question, would be, there's, there's a thought behind it, there's a, there's a rationale behind it. And I think that's, you know, would, would be easily explainable versus now, we, when we kind of looked at it, you know, the equivalent residential units, you know, when we looked at that too, we're kind of unique in how we calculate per ERUs as well. So we're kind of unique in that, you know. And again, this was like, as we're kind of going through it, we're looking how we had done it. And we kind of had the spreadsheet and it was a member of city code that had been there for a long period of time. And what happened was as these WAC charges came forward, we just were not collecting enough revenue, which then leads to these bigger spikes and rate adjustments to make sure that we're able to fund the future improvements that are needed for the system.
Having a hard time reconcile, reconciling. Um, so the current assessment calculation on the example you gave us is a, a significant increase. But the, the significant increase is what was assumed by the rate study that we did, right? So, so the, in this case, um, the, moving to a structure that for this example would, you know, provide this significant increase, that is what is needed to get the, because the al-, the alternative of not doing this is higher residential rates, right? In order to meet the goals of the, of the overall funding.
Correct, the, the study, part of the study looked at, like Dan said, infrastructure, future growth, um, also current infrastructure needs. If this was altered in any way, uh, future rates for the users would have to be adjusted and obviously up. And one of the reasons we, I mean, one of the, um, if you recall, I think we settled on an 18% increase at the last time. And, you know, we started out in the twenties when we did some first looks at all of this. And, and what this is a way to do, it's, it's a way to have that one-time payment for the people, for the units that are coming online to support the infrastructure. And not have the rate payers pay for expansion or um, new capacity or anything like that, to just pay for what it, what the operational costs are at best as possible for the water. You know, we can go back and talk about delayed and, and rates that should have been increased on an ongoing basis, on a regular basis. But um, this was the best scenario we could come up with to, to keep a moderate, if you want to call 18% moderate, but as best we can, the lowest we could, and still support uh, the capital improvement plan that we put forward uh, for the water infrastructure.
Other questions?
I don't have any comments.
No, I just, you know, this, I know this is, you know, a little bit of a sticker shock. But I also think that a household is a household is a household, right? Whether it's part of a multi-unit housing complex or whether it's a single-family home sitting on a lot somewhere. Um, and I know that we, I, I remember sitting in on, on a few of the meetings when this was being discussed before, you know, I began my tenure here. And I remember um, clearly Engineer um, Ryan saying uh, that we were, we had some significant issues with our, our water system. And we were really facing a potential catastrophic failure at some point. And I don't know if you can, um...
We better clear that up. Capacity, capacity.
Capacity.
So obviously, we've been fortunate with the last five summers have been fairly wet. And, you know, rain events that have been, you know, consistent throughout the week instead of just droughts of two weeks, therefore then that's when our water spikes really go up. Obviously, when we had to shut down uh, one of the wells and plants uh, to do some construction, we were on, should we make the call? Should we do it now to go on a water conservation? Because, you know, that's where we're at. You know, we've had a lot of significant growth. We still have debts on water plantment, plant treatment, plant one and three. Uh, that, a portion of that debt falls off in 21. Your remaining debt for just that project doesn't fall off until 24, and you already need another plant and well. You know, that's all then planned out and scoped out, moving towards that. So you would have that built in. But uh, again, this then just reiterates that development pays for the growth instead of the users, right? We were just that far behind on a lot of the things that's, the, basically we're at a standstill. It's a dollar amount for a very long time. I mean, we're talking 20 years you didn't increase your, your WAC. And, you know, that, to where we just went now was, put us, I mean, 3,600, we're right in the middle. A lot of cities such as Wyoming, Lindstrom, Victoria, Rogers, and Lakeville, Chaska now. But you got cities, you know, up at the top at $9,000. Um, another ones at six and five. And some of those cities even at the top have all these other extra fees that we don't even have. A lot of them even had other fees such as, you know, separate permits for its water tower charges uh, and, and stuff like that. Uh, water treatment plant fee, reserve capacity connection, you know, they had all those other things. We got two fees with development, area charges if it's a subdivision. Uh, and then the, the WAC, which is an equivalent unit back to a residential, you know, just like, because they're bringing the demand to the system. We wouldn't have to expand the system if there was no development. So it's just balancing that teeter tot that was way out of WAC.
Way out of WAC.
There was, there's some maintenance that needs to be done too, it isn't just the existing bills. There's some maintenance coming up.
So you built the infrastructure too, and you never did any maintenance on it. So that, stuff that's in motion right now will be this first maintenance it's ever seen.
Yeah, well, well, it's clear to me, we have to create a model that supports our current system and future improvements in our infrastructure. So um, you know, it, it, it certainly makes sense to me, even though it's a little hard to, to look at on paper.
So the numbers are big. Um, one of the, one of the things that was eye-opening when we went through this process is the last time we had water capacity expansion was, was it 1999? Is that the last time we brought on additional capacity?
2005, I think they completed Water Plant Three.
2005.
But the problem is they're not completely separated, so they, they're not independent plants. So this, the capacity really didn't increase that much. It just, you could put a well on a treatment plant, but it didn't actually increase capacity.
So the work in motion was separate that, so you'd have three individual systems that could run separately. But to allow for growth, you, you're looking at additional capacity, infrastructure improvements that are planned in the CIP, part of the water study.
The other point that maybe it's worth pointing out is when we had, when council had the discussion in 20, at the end of 2018 about the water study, um, we also took an approach of, look, would rather see a one-time larger increase rather than a period of 10% increases. And so I would encourage anyone who's listening to this and has concerns over what is the future of water rates, it's not 18% every year for a number of years. It's, let's do a one-time adjustment, get ourselves back in line. Um, and that was an approach that council took previously.
That's right.
That I think is important here because this isn't a trend line. This is an adjustment to what should have been, uh, a history of adjustments.
There was also an increase that was supposed to take place a couple of years ago that didn't happen.
Correct.
So then that shoved everything into the last year also, so.
Compound, right. There's a lot of catch-up here.
I agree with you completely, Mark.
Um, one tactical question. Um, if I am a developer in the system in pipeline and I'm seeing this, I have some heartburn, what, what happens with, you know, in, in process projects or?
Well, if it's in process, since the ordinance hasn't been passed yet, they're, if they've got their application in, they remain at the old rate.
Okay.
It's anybody, once the ordinance is passed, anybody who submits after that time. So anybody who's in the building now.
And I think to that point too, i- it's, if you look at this, you know, really, the suggestion is only to change the multifamily and the mixed-use calculations. I mean, if you had a hundred units of single-family housing coming in, there's no change in how that rate is calculated. You know, but looking at this, if you do the math on, you know, if you're bringing on 75 units, and we're doing a residential equivalency of 32, you need to bring on 225 apartment, single-family apartments would come on to make the nine, to make the hundred WACs using our old system. So you're putting basically two and a quarter times amount of command, demand in the system for what we're charging a hundred WACs for. Versus if they're a hundred single-family home, that's a one-to-one. So, you know, and the commercial too, is again, that's being charged using the current system. So we're just trying to recapture some of this increased, you know, capacity at the multifamilies. That's the pressure that they're putting on the system.
And it's charged at the project level, and then through the project is passed on, independent of the city, to individual tenants or developments within that project. So it's negotiated at the project level. Thank you. And next steps on this, if you could clarify one more time, what, what happens after tonight? Tonight's discussion only, but?
And I guess it was, yeah, looking for feedback and as if, you know, this kind of calculation system or proposal here is agreeable to the council, I'll work with Bridget to actually get it in ordinance format. Um, I can't write ordinance as well as she can, so she can.
Nobody can.
Craft the language, craft the language to make it an ordinance. We'll do the other language cleanup as well. So we'll kind of come back with the complete cleaned up streamlined ordinance. Bring that back for council approval, public hearing at a future meeting once that work is completed.
So clarification, we, council has previously set the rates.
Yes.
We have not updated the ordinance to reflect those rates.
Correct, yes.
And then we are going to go one step further in removing the rates from the ordinance, and we're going to reference a rate sheet.
Yep, and yeah, and that part is a little bit more, that's just a housekeeping effort. I mean, that, the, the fee schedule, it's a, we, we, it's a consistency in the housekeeping.
Yeah, and just out of a quick question, has there been any feedback from developers and that kind of?
Not heard any yet. I mean, this is kind of the first time this has actually been.
Pretty much new, but normally they have wind of it by now, I'm sure. But just curious, something has to be done, that's the worst part about it. And it's big numbers, no question, but.
It is. I, I do appreciate though, the time staff took to break out where their, what, what's simple residential, what is multifamily, all-residential versus where we have this hybrid model. And it, it's hard to argue against the hybrid model because it is a mixed-use. It is as mixed-use as it gets, so. Other points of discussion or things we would like to see next time this comes through? Staff, do you feel you have enough?
I do.
I think I have all my questions answered.
Mine too.
Very good, excellent. We will move on to staff updates. Donovan, you want to start us off?
No, no app update for me, but willing to answer any questions.
Any questions for Donovan this evening? Chief Peterson?
Uh, the only uh, update I have is just reiterating what I mentioned at the last city council meeting, with the forecasts showing no ending of snow accumulation. Uh, just to make sure that everyone slows down, uh, just be very careful. You never can tell when those uh, streets may be a little icy or, um, you know, with packed snow. A couple of weeks ago, one of our squad cars had gone and responded to, I think there were 10 separate incidents of cars in the ditch off of Scandia Trail near the Jewel Avenue. And our car was unfortunately hit by a car that lost control. And a Minnesota State Trooper responded to write our crash, that the car hit into us, and she got hit.
Wow.
And she was transported to Regions Hospital. And uh, our officers are fine, she is fine, but it just really goes to show you how um, serious and dangerous it is out there uh, in these weather conditions. So with that, I have nothing else for you, unless you have questions for me.
Anything for Chief Peterson? Dan?
Reminder that Lakes Area Expo, March 30th, the city has signed up for a booth. Um, so we will get a sign-up sheet. So if anybody from the council, ED, wants to sign up and participate at the booth, we will have a booth at the Lakes Area Expo, and that's March 30th from 9:00 AM to 11:30, or excuse me, 1:30. And then I also want to just uh, let the council know that LATV was at the Polar Plunge and took a bunch of photographs. And they're now selling those photographs and they're splitting the proceeds with the Rotary. So they, there's a link on the city's Facebook page that goes back to their um, gallery of pictures. And there are some really, some really good pictures that are in there. I did look through them last week when I was up at LATV studio. So uh, if you're interested in looking at the pictures, purchasing a picture, they are on LATV site.
Were you looking at Councilmember Monson when you were talking?
Such a flattering picture.
It's the model for, ever munch the scream.
Chief Newman?
Uh, yes, I do have a request for residents and commercial business owners to clear out the areas around their fire hydrants uh, driving through the city. Uh, many of the hydrants, you can only see the top of the hydrant. And uh, if we're called out to a structural fire, that is not the time to be clearing out the hydrants. So we ask everybody for their assistance in clearing them out, a three-by-three area around the hydrant. Uh, we have uh, had a few citizens for Forest Lake volunteer to clean out several hydrants. And we've had some uh, Boy Scout troops step up and, and cover big areas. So um, a shout-out to them for their help, that's been very positive. But with over 800 hydrants in the city, we need some assistance from the property owners to get them cleared out. That's all I have, unless you have something for me.
Uh, I appreciate the council's um, action on the personnel issues that we presented tonight. Um, as you all know, we have, uh, our deputy clerk has resigned. Uh, we will be evaluating what we should be doing with that position. Uh, and let you know, we will continue to review operations and make adjustments as we see fit. So hopefully we'll come back and tell you some more things that we, we suggest. Uh, and finally, the, we are in negotiations with the 49ers for their contract. And hopefully, we'll see where that goes in the next couple of weeks, so that's it.
Thank you, honor and updates.
Hi, Emily.
Mayor City Council, just kind of going off, the town hall meeting that was planned and scheduled for last Wednesday with Senator Housley and Representative Detmer. Uh, there are some movement and action within the legislation currently. So right now, the league seeks uh, city transportation funds and street improvement district authority. Basically, this is three bills that would generate new transportation dollars for cities that has been introduced. Uh, the one would impose potentially a $10 surcharge on license tab fees and which would raise 57 million annually. You know, we've talked about raising the gas tax, but as things become more efficient or other alternatives of transportation are used, you actually were seeing a decrease in funding. So this would potentially allocate funding towards the existing small cities assistance account, which we don't participate because we get state aid funds now because we're over 5,000. So that, that's an existing count for communities that are less than 5,000, but they've only got the funds twice. Uh, but it also would create a new, larger cities assistance account. So that, you know, a pot of money that we would have access to that we currently don't, that would come from basically license tabs or the people that are actually using the roads. Uh, the other one would set up and improve uh, street improvement districts. You might be more familiar, if you were to just backwards, how in the past, a long time ago, was referenced as transportation area charge as part of development projects that we no longer collect. Uh, state statute does allow sidewalk street districts, and we've talked about that, potentially funding some pedestrian improvements, but we've never acted upon it. Uh, just, that's just kind of where that one went. But this would create uh, areas, you know, let's just say you, you have a particular area that's generating a lot of traffic, a lot of growth. You could create that district such as, say, the Headwaters Developments, you know. And then you needed the, the wider and bigger infrastructure. So you could isolate areas like that instead of, uh, probably not the right word, but punishing the rest of the city for the growth in one area, right? Uh, and the other one would be to allocate funding towards a local uh, road improvement program that we'll be submitting the grant application this weekend for. So obviously, that's been a successful grant in the past. We've, uh, we're successful in obtaining it once. That's a nice. nice grant, because it comes with very few strings, you know, basically, you got to meet state aid requirements, and we're used to doing that all the time, so it's nothing really new there. So, a lot of activity and realizing that, obviously, there's a funding gap in existing transportation statewide. Certainly, whatever momentum you guys can provide as a council as a whole, and maybe EDA, towards maybe some letters of support or stuff like that, looks like you guys are collaborating, working together, school district input too, but now would be the time to start contacting those representatives that we have access to, to help facilitate funding towards those bills. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions of Brad? Thank you. Dave?
Just the only update is just wanting to thank my public work staff for the last month, they've been doing time cards and, on average, about 200 to 250 hours each person for the last four weeks of work, so they're spending more time in their plow trucks and with their families, so weekends, nights, they're here pretty much all weekend, most of them, and last week, most of the time there, and when you're not plowing, you're hauling snow out of parking lots, or out of the city center, cleaning trails, and then start all over again, so they have been doing a heck of a job, I think, I mean, besides people not being very happy about us putting a lot of snow in their driveways, I think most people are understanding, and I think they're doing a great job, so just wanted to take the time to thank them tonight and for doing a heck of a job.
Agreed.
I would agree with that.
Five, five nodding heads, yes, agreed. Thank you. Councilmember Bystrom?
I met with Sharon Lundquist from the Senior Center last week. It was a real good meeting to kind of discuss some hopes and kind of visions she has for the Senior Center and some barriers, and so more on that soon. I attended the Parks Trails and Lakes Commission meeting, and just wanted to thank Terry Steenblock and Tim Miller for stepping up to the chair and vice chair roles, and to the entire team for their service, and Jamie Mouché, our supervisor, for her leadership, so she's doing a really nice job with that team. I did get a request from a couple of the Parks Trails and Lakes Commissions members to clarify their role in decision-making and recommendations on the lake side of that PTLC. I did roll that up to Mayor Bain and Administrator Casey, and so I would expect some kind of feedback on that, that I could carry back to that team at some point. In terms of citizen communication, I've received a couple of calls and emails on the refuse services contact, the recycling side of that in particular, paying attention, which is good, that our citizens are paying attention. There's a lot of interest in that, the organic side of that, and the potential opportunity to increase the scope of those recyclables. Some calls, emails, and messages on the Highway 97 corridor and the Highway 97 Goodview intersection, so I appreciated Ryan Goodman's update and encouragement that we, now is a good time to contact our representatives. And a citizen, actually, two citizens expressing concerns about the new CBD shop in town and sales, sales and advertisement of CBD products in town, so I just request of our council continued discussion on that density and location of, you know, these and other types of establishments. We've had several conversations about whether it's in the context of strategic planning or some other form, just don't want to lose sight of it. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Member Husnick?
Thank you. I missed the last school board meeting, which pre-occurred last Thursday, because I had a previous commitment, that it was a once-a-year meeting that I had to make somewhere else, but I do understand that they're going to make up a couple of days of school, so, March 11th, I know for sure, and it was a, I didn't bring the paper, but there's two days that they normally use for professional work, and... It was March, okay, anyways, two days that the kids have got to make up. Sorry, folks, you're going to have to go to school, so, but looking at the way the weather's been, I don't blame them, and quite a few days off, there's no question about that. Otherwise, I did make the EDA meeting this evening, lots of exciting things coming up there, and so stay tuned on that particular thing, I'm not going to get into any details tonight, but, and I want to welcome Paul to, sitting up here, Paul and I have worked together for a long, long time over the years, so appreciate that. Otherwise, what I've been doing is plowing snow and cleaning out a couple of fire hydrants, okay? And then I did meet with Al, the other day, we were talking about the specifications, all the things about the new fire trucks that are going to be coming online, so hope you guys all had a chance to take a look at that, so, and that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Councilmember Monson?
Last week, I attended the Planning Commission meeting, and just want to take a second to thank those members for just the time and thoughtful discussion they have when they make their decisions and recommendations, and just wanted to formally thank Paul Gerard for participating for, correct, 24 years on the Planning Commission?
I'm not really sure.
It's at least that long, because I was...
Yeah, yeah, so thank you for all that time that you served on there. Also, attended a Personnel Committee meeting here this Thursday, or tomorrow night, will attend the Planning Commission meeting again, and Thursday, will attend my first Policy Committee for the Rushline Corridor, they held in Maplewood. And then, just one more, Councilmember Bystrom's probably going to have the details on this, but I will be attending, just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, that there is a vaping education event tomorrow night, held at Hosanna Lutheran Church on Scandia Trail, and I cannot remember the times, but I know in your day job, you're working on this?
Actually, a few flyers sitting right over there, in case anybody would like one.
What, what time does it start, for those who are listening?
Free pizza at 5:45 to 6:30.
Free pizza at 5:45?
5:45 to 6:30, and then the event itself starts at 6:30.
Okay, and the event starts at 6:30, so just wanted to remind everybody about that important event when we're having discussions about facilities and things, so that's it.
Very good, thanks. Couple of quick updates from me, we now have a Planning Commission position open, and this is the time of the year when we sometimes have the quorum issues with some of the Planning Commission members that spend some time out of the state of Minnesota, so we will look to fill that as soon as possible, but Dan, if we could get some social media updates, and then put the link back on the front page for the commission's applications. It is good to have a backlog, we have a couple of applications in hand, but we'll be looking to make a decision on that sooner rather than later. I believe we do have quorum for Wednesday, is that confirmed?
Yes.
So, we are good for this Wednesday, and again, we just don't want to lose sight of that. Also, with Councilmember Gerard on board, we will be doing a, reassessing our commission appointments, and I welcome feedback as things have settled in over the last couple of weeks, months, on what's fitting, what seems to be scheduled problems. I know a couple of you have reached out with some conflicts, and now is a good time to adjust, and then to Councilmember Gerard, I'm interested in your feedback on what lays on positions you're interested in, and let's have that conversation, and we won't do that this next meeting, but probably first, well, that second meeting in March, look to make those adjustments if that, if that works for everybody. Time to kind of reshuffle the deck and get everybody in the right place. And then also, just quick thank you once again to Ryan and Councilmember Monson on your participation and representation of the city in the Rotary Winter Plunge. Also, our Planning Commission Chair Susan was the co-chair of that event, and raised a lot of money, and so appreciate everyone who literally took the plunge for us. And I completely skipped over you for council updates, and I apologize, but I will give you an opportunity if you have a council update.
I really don't, I'm Madam Mayor and Councilwoman, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the city, and I'm willing to serve in any capacity you see fit.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, with that, there's nothing else to come before council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, and we're adjourned.
Just for a second.